I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the cause of allegiance. Do it first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask the board to appoint a pro tem in absent self-President.
We'll roll first to establish.
Roll call first, okay, sorry. Trustee Bond.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Heinz.
Here.
Trustee Keck.
Yes.
Trustee Kizmer.
Yay.
Okay, now I'd like to ask for a pro tem, please.
I nominate Bill Keck.
Okay, trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yes.
Trustee Keck.
Yes.
Trustee Kizmer.
Yay.
Okay, we'll start with the public comments. This is an opportunity for anybody that is in the room here to address the board. It's not necessarily a two-way conversation, but you have two minutes. Is there anyone that cares to speak to the board? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Public hearing on the fiscal year 14 annual operating budget and capital improvements program. Mr. Zofol.
Thank you, trustee Keck. We are nearing the end of the budget process. We're having the public hearing tonight. I'm going to cover the last funds that we have not reviewed yet, and then we'll have first reading of the ordinance, and we'll be looking to approve the budget at next Monday's meeting. Just give you, overall, looking at the budget, we've got budgeted revenue of $24.4 million in this year's budget. Expenses are budgeted at $23.9 million overall, so overall balanced budget. Some of the major items we have in there are the Boulder Hill Water System Improvement Project, hiring of two police officers, and updating our comprehensive plan for the village. Said I would be happy to answer any questions and allow for a public comment.
Are there any questions from the board?
Does that include purchase of vehicles?
There, what's in there right now is the brush chipper and purchasing two vehicles outright. Later in the meeting, we're going to discuss possibly altering that, and if so, then I will make the changes between tonight and the next meeting before we approve the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Since this is public hearing, would this be open to the public for comment as well?
Is there, is there anybody in? Yeah, come down to the podium, sign in. This is a public hearing.
Greg Nelson, 219 Jefferson. Really just one comment. Why isn't the budget posted that I can read it?
Look, I thought it was posted, but I will look into that.
I should be able to read that at any time. In its entirety, before you even got to this point. Looking into it isn't going to help. I need an answer. Is there a reason why? We got anything to hide?
The only thing I would say is that I assumed it was posted.
Went and looked all over the village site, and there's nothing in any of the, any of the committee meetings or anything like that. Should be a link to go and find all that information, and it's not there. How can you have a public meeting about a budget that doesn't have public detail available in its entirety? It's been this way for several years, this way, where we can't get at the information. We gotta go in and we gotta do a FOIA on it to get the information. That's ridiculous. Shame.
I'll have our attorney make a comment on this.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, this is the first I understand that I've heard that it was not posted, and certainly it should be, and I think that as Mr. Zofol's indicated, he will make sure that it gets posted. But I, other than that, I don't know the background as to what happened to it.
I don't know, you better ask the lawyer.
Should we go any further if it's not?
I do not have an answer whether it was posted or not. I don't know. What I could say is, okay, our attorney has commented on it. I would defer to Administrator Zofol that if it was not posted, then we would not vote on it tonight.
Well, you're not scheduled to vote on it anyway tonight.
Well, I'm just saying, just in response to the question that was asked here, there is no vote on it tonight. So I would ask Director Zofol to, or Manager Zofol, to check and see that it was, whether it was published or not.
Yeah, if it's not posted, we'll have it posted, and we can get your hard copy also.
Well, we gotta make sure it's nicely, easily found.
Okay, if you want to, if you want to speak, please come down to the podium, please. That's our formal procedure.
Again, Greg Nelson, we gotta make sure that if we're going to go electronic, that it has links easily attainable and searched. We shouldn't have to go looking all over God's creation. It should be right on the front page. If we're going to have this kind of technology, and we're gonna, we're saying that we have this kind of technology, and we're pushing it out there, we gotta make sure that it's easily found. I should be able to go, oh, budget, click. Proposed budget, click. Comments, click. Should be able to send in comments against that budget. Hey, online, whatever, I disagree with this.
Thank you. We will check and make sure that it is published. All right, board commission and committee reports.
You'd have to ask for any further comment.
Oh, do you want to? All right, is there any further comment about the FY14 annual operating budget and capital improvements program?
We should have them set up there for the next meeting so the people can come and vote like they always do. Set the agenda up there.
There should be, Debbie sets them up there earlier today.
I mean, the budget.
We will get to the bottom of what happened here. I don't know exactly right now, but we will get to the bottom of what happened here.
I do have one comment.
All right, yeah, further comments on the public hearing?
While I agree with Mr. Nelson's concern, I would point out that as we've discussed this budget over the past six weeks or more, sections of it have always been part of the agenda packet, so it has been available to the public but not in a concise format that he's requesting. So I wanted to make it clear to the public that that information has been distributed. It just hasn't been packaged perhaps in quite the right way.
And for complete clarity, I think that's the same version of the budget that all of us have obviously received, so we didn't get anything that you guys didn't get.
Any further comments? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Next item on the agenda is board commission and committee reports. Beautification Committee, trustee Bond.
Beautification Committee will be meeting Wednesday, April 17th at 6:00. We'll be discussing some 60 new bluebird houses that are being installed, and the Petunia Planting Project on the bridge, which will occur on May 18th, and people are welcome to assist us in either project.
I would offer a comment here in that I walked a dog around the house over the weekend. I got tulips that are two inches tall coming up. That really surprised me with how cold the weather's been, to say the least, so. And the robins did show up.
They've been out there since January.
Well, you saw them before I did. All right, thank you. Next is historic preservation, President McElhenney. The next meeting is April 15th, 2013, at 6:30 PM in the community room here at the Village Hall. Next item is intergovernmental committee, trustee Lee.
Next meeting will be before the village board meeting, Monday, March 25th, 6:00 in the community room up above.
Hey, Bill, just one comment about the intergovernmental, intergovernmental meeting. I think we may try and have it in this room, if that's right with everybody. We were going to display the bands that we're all going to select, so if it's possible to have it in this room, so we can fit more people.
All right, that's, that's fine. All right, thank you. That'll be in the minutes, then. Next items for individual, or no, items for discussion. The FY14 annual operating budget and capital improvements program. Administrator Zofol.
Thank you, trustee Keck. This evening, we're going to discuss the special revenue funds. Special revenue funds are funds that are restricted as to the use of the revenue. The special service area funds fall under this. We discussed them previously, so tonight I will cover the other ones. They were in your packet. You have the motor fuel tax fund. Obviously, we get the motor fuel tax as the funding source for here. We have our maintenance program, the annual program, and I did get from EEI what they will be doing this year. As far as resurfacing, they're going to be doing Hamlet Circle from Seasons Ridge Boulevard to the end of Hamlet Circle. They're going to be resurfacing River Bend Drive from Briar Cliff to Route 25, and Lebanon Street from Sherman Avenue to Melrose. Then they're going to be doing patching on Dixon Road at Galena Road, and Fifth Street from Obansia to Sherman, and then crack sealing in Fairfield Way subdivision. So that is the MFT program for this year. In addition, they'll be doing, the state will be doing Douglas Road from Montgomery Road to Melrose through the Laffo Program. And then we have our contributions to the Route 30 widening and the Route 31 interchange that work. Our contributions are in here. There's a little bit of maintenance being done to the Concord Bridge, and then we're contributing to Orchard Road for the vehicle preemption on the signals. So those are the projects that are budgeted in motor fuel tax. Additionally, we have the salt and snow removal supplies budgeted in there as we have the last few years. Any questions about motor fuel tax?
One quick one.
Yes.
Has somebody talked to IDOT or railroad about getting a quiet zone along 31? You know, Wallers, I was looking into it.
I can find out.
That's not really a budget item.
Yeah, it's not a budget item, but I can find out if we have.
All right, trustee Heinz.
Fifth, Fifth Street, you said from where? From Obansia Avenue to Montgomery Road?
Yeah, they're going to do patching there from Obansia to Sherman.
Well, they better think about a regular Fifth Avenue from Montgomery Road to Sherman, because that road is ours, and that's falling apart. You got big holes all over that road.
All right, I will make them aware of that.
Are there any other comments from the trustees?
Next fund is our economic development loan fund. Fox River Foods did pay off their loan as part of their, their sale. They repaid that, so we currently have about a million and a half dollars in the, in the loan fund available for businesses who are, want to come into the town or expanding. So we do work with the Economic Development Committee and Freddie Bushmody, one of our consultants, on, on making that available for businesses to help out. We also have our forfeiture and seizure fund. This is money that comes in from drug fines and other fines through the court system. It's restricted as to what the chief can do with it. He usually buys equipment related to DUI. Can also do some patrol car maintenance with it, so we have that fund. And then we have the emergency 911 fund. This is money that comes in from the ETSB for the wireless 911 money. You'll see in the past, we've usually budgeted about $85,000. This year, we're budgeting $40,000, because with our switch, we will stop receiving this money. This money will now go to, to KenCom once we've made the switch. Then we have the TIF fund for the TIF over on Route 30. We're looking at doing some improvements to the Pearl Street Storm Sewer, which we think will help that, that entire area, and then doing some maintenance work on, it's always been called the Spats property, if that helps, kind of behind Grandma's table. It's a piece of land that was donated to us, it's within the TIF. They're going to try and level that out and put some low maintenance ground cover in there to make it a little easier for us to maintain. You will notice, as I went through some of these, some of them do show a negative balance for the year, that we're spending more than we're bringing in the year. Like with motor fuel tax, sometimes we save up, you know, over time, we don't use it all in one year, we'll use it another year, and that's what's happening. All of these have a balance to cover everything you're being spent. When we started fiscal year 12, the motor fuel tax fund had a balance of about $750,000. So we're just using up some of that this year. We kind of bank some away year to year. Same with the, with the TIF fund there. We're spending more than we're bringing in this one year, but we haven't done projects in the past, so that money's just been, been building up. So I don't want you to think that we are spending money we don't have.
Is, for the TIF area, is it possible we can use some of this for Montgomery Road expansion? Is that included in the TIF?
The TIF area, I don't believe stretches. Yeah, I don't think that it stretches that far. So I don't think we can, that's outside of the TIF area.
Would it fix Fifth Street, though?
Fifth Street, I mean, that's where it goes in between the, the TIF area and Farm and Fleet, that area is.
You mean the extension of Fifth Street?
Yeah.
I mean, that was one of the things we contemplated doing with the, with the TIF, if it ever got fully going and generated enough revenue. That was one of the projects contemplated. Now, as far as the Fifth Street patching, I don't, I don't think it covers that area, because that's on the other, on the other side. I think that's outside of the, the TIF area.
Instead of putting money towards the, the land maintenance, I'd rather see it go towards the extension of Fifth Street, if we could. That's my recommendation. I mean, it's.
It's just a, several hundred thousand dollar project, and when, unless development starts there, we're, we're not going to have enough money to, to extend it, which is the problem. We need, unless something builds there, we're getting in about, you know, $20,000, $25,000 a year at this point from it.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to items for separate action.
Can I jump in? I just had one question. I didn't think we were done with that yet. Montgomery TIF.
Go ahead.
Oh, the police gift fund, did you have anything to say on that?
No, it's really, that's donations that come in, people specifically give for the police. Dan uses it just for miscellaneous costs that he may have. You know, we usually get in a couple hundred dollars, and they, they've used it for DARE in the past or other such items.
In the emergency 911 fund, the capital outlay for equipment, 150 grand.
That was contemplated in case there are things we need to do with the switch to KenCom. At this point, I don't think we'll have to, because they're talking about covering the, the upfront cost we thought we might have. That was contemplated for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, items for separate action. Ordinance 1559 approving the FY14 annual operating budget.
No, you missed some.
Capital bud, I'm sorry.
You missed the vehicle funding.
Items for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Item B, then, items for discussion, FY14 vehicle funding options.
This arose out of last week's discussion, where Mike and Alan talked about the fleet and the idea of leasing, and there seemed to be some interest from the board, so we said we would go and, and bring some information back to you. If you saw in your packet, he brought information regarding the leasing, also some other vehicles. I want to point out the brush chipper is currently in the budget that's been proposed to you at the $65,000. There's also $100,000 currently in there for police vehicles, which was meant to just purchase outright two police cars. Mike has brought you options here to lease either three or six patrol vehicles. If you lease three, it would be $55,000 a year for three years. If you lease six, it'd be $108,000 a year for three years. You can also do numbers in between there, or less than that. You could do two, you could do four or five. Basically, it's a little over $18,000 a year for three years to lease a vehicle. So that's where the three comes out to 54 and change, so 55,000. So you could do more. Yeah, I know there were questions last time about the cost difference, because if you'll see in the paperwork, it's about $52,000 and change to buy one outright, and about 54 and change to, to lease, you know, to lease the three.
That's not counting the interest, though.
Well, no, that is with the, with the interest number in there. And as of, in April 1st, the price on them is going up $4,000. So if you do decide you want to lease, we're going to ask you at Monday's meeting to give us permission to advance purchase those, so that we can get in ahead of the increase, because that really about offsets the, the interest you're seeing. Because right now, like I said, they're 52 and change, you're going to go up to 56 and change April 1st, because they're adding $4,000 on there. So it comes out about the same to, to lease or purchase, so really, it's just a matter of if the board would like to lease, and if so, how many vehicles you would like to, to lease.
I think the discussion initially we had a week or two ago was three, and then we wanted to look at options. Then these options were brought into us, and I would open it up to the board to discuss how many vehicles we'd be talking.
I'd like to see him just purchase two outright instead of leasing them.
Could you explain again the difference between leasing and how many vehicles we get for what time period?
Sure. I mean, right now, we've got, for $100,000, we've got in the budget right now, we would buy two outright. For $108,000, you'd have to pay that each of the next three years, we would get six cars now. Or if we wanted to lease three now, we, for $55,000, we could get three now for $55,000 in this year's budget, and then be the same the next two years.
Well, the other thing to remember is if, all right, if we purchased some next year, there would be another $100,000. In the third year after that, there'd be another $100,000.
Right.
It's not that this is $100,000, and that's all we have to do. It's $100,000 each year.
Right. Yeah, if you lease it, you're looking at three-year commitment, so it's.
Because the original discussion, as I recall, was that we could get more vehicles upfront for the same money.
Right.
And that was the advantage that we'd all looked at. I'd like to discuss that, then, to see if that's an option. It would give us more, trustee Lee.
Yeah, it's, it was like the mechanic said. He had a couple old ones there. He had to put $2,800 in the one for a transmission. He had to do another one that he put $800 in for brakes or whatever. It comes down to, we'd have six, and we got six old ones. I think Dan said they're all 150,000 miles, to the point where, and the paint's coming off one of them, where really, we need six, because we haven't purchased some in the past. This will tie us down for 100,000 for their, like you said, Bill, for two more years, but if we do it now, we will also save that $4,000 increase on them, and we will have the usage of the six, where now, all we're going to do is put more money in these cars and end up with nothing, and you probably aren't to buy two next year in a way.
In all likelihood, we'd be coming back to you next year and asking for at least two, and the year after, so you'd, yeah, you'd be in the same $100,000 each of the next two years.
Because Chief Myers, we were talking about the replacement of some of the 800 series cars, right?
That's correct. The, the 870 series, which means those vehicles are from 2007 that have, like trustee Lee said, well over 100,000 miles.
Well, as I recall, there was somewhat of a consensus by the board to consider the option of the leasing to give us more upfront for basically the same money. Also, bearing in mind that there's going to be a price increase here shortly with the whole program. That's what I recall the discussion to be.
What happens at the end of the lease?
Then we own the vehicles.
Buy in for a dollar, isn't it?
It's, we don't even pay, I mean, they're basically, they're ours at the end of the lease.
I guess I would entertain additional discussion on the merits of the lease program as opposed to the purchase program.
I'm looking at the six patrol cars. You're saying $108,000 for three years.
Correct.
That's $300,000.
Yes.
Well, you know, you're doing the same thing if you buy them outright.
But that's only two at a time.
Right.
You're getting all six upfront.
Yeah, the, the cost difference really isn't, isn't there, especially with the price increase we expect to see. Cost versus leasing versus purchasing outright, we just get more of them upfront.
Trustee Broly?
Are we, would you say in desperate need of six vehicles right at this moment? Or I guess what was your initial request this year?
I had discussions with Director Poobenson and the mechanic that their, them 870 cars are, are getting up in the mileage. Do I need six today? No, but I desperately need a few. And the, the difference between the purchase and the lease is that if we lease them, we get all six today. If we purchase them, we only get two today, two next year, well, depending on what we, what we get approved.
The disadvantage that I see is you're getting all the use upfront, so at the end of six years, potentially, in all likelihood, you'll need six cars again. So it's cyclical at that point. I'd like to see us buffer that, in that we purchase an even number of cars every year so that it doesn't hurt our budget as much. If you're not in dire need of six vehicles today, I'd say we go with less than that. Not that you're, you know, that you don't need them, but I think from a budget standpoint, it would make sense to spread that out over time, so you're not using up all your use in the first three years.
Correct. I would recommend four, if not six.
Any other comments?
If the, if I heard correctly, the, the cars we have now that need to be replaced are 2007 model cars.
That's correct.
Which suggests to me we've gotten six years of use from them. So at the end of the three-year period on the full package lease, we would still have, hopefully, life left in those cars. And in my mind, this kind of move now would help us catch up for the years when we weren't able to adequately maintain that fleet.
Correct. And the other advantage is with the Crown Vic, there was a 3,000, 36,000 mile warranty. With the Chevy Tahoe's, they're five-year, 100,000, which extends our use quite a bit.
For, the math for me is that we would save possibly $20,000 in avoiding increased cost for the same car in the future. We would save the maintenance cost on the older vehicles that were trying to keep going, and we would put our police force in a reliable, dependable, new model car.
Correct. And we'd also get between 10 and 14 grand in trade-in or, or outright sale on eBay.
To me, I, I would favor doing the six now, and I'm, I'm actually very appreciative that somebody brought this option to us to consider.
Our mechanic said that if we sold all six of the used ones, we would get enough to buy one new one. So really, when you say four, now we're at five, and all it takes is one transmission or one major thing, and all of a sudden, it's a deal, definitely, by getting six.
I guess we should continue this discussion by simply deciding how many vehicles we're talking about here, because I think that has to be decided upfront.
Yeah.
And then go into the money from there.
What did you say we'd save by getting all six of them now?
Well, if they're going up 4,000, and we need six of them, whether we buy all six now or over three years, that's still 24,000 in increased cost that we know we're going to face. And then add to that the maintenance of trying to keep the older fleet in operation versus a warranty that covers all of that maintenance. So to me, to the taxpayer, it seems like the best value we could talk about is to, to do the six now, avoid the price increase, and get them in a warranty program that costs us very little to maintain.
Are you going with the Chevy Tahos, then?
Yes, sir. One, I would like to buy a Chevy pickup, so it would be four in one, or three in one, five in one. Yes, all Chevy, though.
Why can't you take one of the used pickups from the village and use that? Because you're not going to use that pickup that much, just for confiscating things.
Well, we would use it as a patrol vehicle. It'd be a multi-function vehicle.
Be fully equipped, you were saying, too, right?
Correct.
And the village trucks are gear shift, aren't they?
No, they're automatics.
Are they automatics?
I think, I'm pretty sure they are.
I believe I've heard a majority that are in favor of leasing, so I think we've got that part.
And I'm not opposed to leave the lease and the six of them, if you need six vehicles. And I really wasn't all that strongly either way, I just figured we should talk about it. So if you're in need of six vehicles, then there's no harm, I think there's benefit in both.
Thank you.
All right, so the next option, then, all right, if we're talking six vehicles, now, you, Chief Myers, you had mentioned a pickup truck in our previous discussion. I don't know that that was included. Now, you, Chief Myers, you had mentioned a pickup truck in our previous discussion. I don't know that that was included.
It would, it would just be, it's similar to the Tahoe. The only difference is I would lose the back end, which I'd have an open bed to be able to transport things.
Now, I remember the discussion.
Yeah, it, it would, um, it would still be on patrol like a Tahoe use. It wouldn't be any different. It just gives us more versatility in the field.
I guess the other discussion was going to the Tahos from the Crown Vics as an upgrade in the type of vehicle.
Absolutely. We currently have four Tahos today. They're, um, they're larger and they're safer than the Crown Vic, and the cost was the same. And we have more interior room in the Tahoe than we do in the Crown Vic. And the Crown Vic is no longer being made for police service.
All right, so the next discussion by the board should be, do we include a pickup instead of a Tahoe? I think we're agreed on six vehicles. Did I hear that right?
No, but majority.
Sick, that, the truck is the same price, basically, is...
Same price.
Correct. Just maybe a hair, hair more, but, so it'd be five in one, but six total.
Wouldn't do prisoner transport or anything. You're talking a regular, standard, two-door cab?
No, but you're not.
Um, I believe it was an extended cab, so we'd be...
Okay, I blew it up.
Not that, quite not that big, but the same size as the Tahoe. We would be able to transport, wasn't prisoner. We would have one prisoner transport section, and then the other one would be for inside storage.
Okay, so right now, we're at five Tahos, one truck. Well, on the same page?
No. I don't agree with the pickup truck, period. Wouldn't be only, only Miss Pally to pick up truck. You know, why don't we just get rid of all the vehicles and buy all Tahos? I'm just, you know, I think it's a waste of money, personally.
What again are you gonna use the truck for, Dan?
Uh, we would, we would use that vehicle, uh, it would be assigned patrol. The advantage would be during the summer, we do a lot of community policing projects. We transport cones and barricades, and we usually take our range stuff to the range. We would use it to haul ammunition, barricades, targets to the outdoor range for shooting. There's a multiple use for that vehicle.
So you're saying there's enough use to justify it. It's not that it would be used all the time for that, but there's enough additional use that you would feel you can justify having that pickup?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, any other comments from the board?
I'll go along with the six squad cars. I don't think we need a pickup truck.
Since it is the same cost, more or less, I think we can all agree that six vehicles to be purchased, correct? Whether or not it's truck or not.
That would be my opinion. If it's the same cost, basically, and if you can get additional use out of it by having that configuration, I would trust your judgment on that.
Yeah, thank you. That, that's all I'm asking for.
I've seen people try to put a bicycle on the back of SUV, and it's not the, it's not the easiest way of doing it. And I know they pick up a lot of bicycles and...
We do transport quite a few things that don't fit in the trunks or in the back of the Tahoe. There's a lot of specialized equipment in the back of the vehicles now, too, with the camera system and the laptop modems and things.
The other thing I would say is that I'm not opposed to trying a different vehicle. If it doesn't work out, we certainly don't have to do it again. And on this one, I trust the chief's judgment as to him being best be able to performing what he has to for us. And if he thinks this vehicle would help, I would be of the opinion that let's try one. I mean, we're not talking six pickup trucks.
No, just five in one, total six.
I understand where trustee Heinz is coming from, but on the other hand, I don't know if I want to take a broken-down old pickup from Public Works.
You wouldn't give them a broken-down one, because they, they put them on the internet and get rid of them.
Well, I'm just saying.
I still say we're better off to get six vehi, six police cars, patrol cars, but that's not my decision. That's the board's decision.
If I could see, then, Dan, are you okay with six vehicles?
Yes.
Are you okay with one of them being a pickup?
It's up to the chief.
Okay. Denny, yes and yes. You're okay with six, but not a pickup?
That's right.
You're okay with six and a pickup, six, and you're not okay with six or a pickup?
Nope, neither one.
All right. I believe I have a majority then that favor six and one of them being a pickup, if that's what the chief feels is needed.
And that would be the level one A, essentially?
Just the control vehicles, yeah.
Yeah, that would be, that would be one A there.
Okay.
The third option down.
And basically, that's what's currently in the budget. I'm gonna have to add eight thousand dollars. But otherwise, that's what's, what's already budgeted.
Mm-hmm.
It's just we'll be getting six vehicles instead of the, instead of the two. The other question I had for the board, if we've moved on from that topic, is I've heard from some of you regarding the bucket truck. There are some of you that, that still favor that, I believe. Last time I polled, there was not a majority that felt that was a need, but since I've heard from some of you, I wanted to bring it back, because this is our last shot before I'm done with the budget. I mean, you can always come back and amend the budget, but...
I think we need a bucket truck. All the money you're gonna save, we have to pay. Out for any time the tree trimmer comes to get a broken branch on top, or put his lights up out in the yard over there, or putting his banners up. We can get our money back easy from that. I'd like to see, see him get that.
All right. I'll go down the line to each trustee. Trustee Lee?
I have a question on, is that bucket truck new? Somebody said it was used.
No, it would be like refurbished.
Refurbished, everything, just like the new. You get the warranty on it and everything.
That was not a new one.
What year is it?
I don't know if they have one specifically in mind, or if they just priced out.
I just don't like the idea of telling our maintenance workers, when they have to go cut down a limb, basically, they're standing more or less underneath a huge limb cutting it down. So I think this is a, one of those safety issues that, that's multi-use. We can use it for a lot, so.
Okay. Trustee Lee, did you have anything else?
I noticed last accounts payable, there was a check like eight thousand dollars. Did all that go for using the bucket truck?
I'd have to look and see if we had them do other stuff.
I agree with Pete. If it's eight thousand just for a short period of time, we'd save money by using the bucket truck. But if it was only a...
My understanding is we pay about eight thousand dollars a year, probably.
A year. We spend more than that.
For it.
Some of them trees they get done, costs...
Well, I guess that's from renting the, from Ken Schmidt. Now, if we have somebody come in and cut trees, that's a separate...
Them people, too. The tree trimmers and, and, uh, so our guys have cut the trees? No, they won't cut the whole tree down.
Well, I mean, they're gonna use it.
Yeah, for trimming and stuff.
Okay. Trustee Lee, anything else?
No.
Okay. Trustee Vaughn?
I think I favor it. I'm, I'm a little concerned about, I think the eight thousand was for traffic light maintenance and street light maintenance, and the tree trimming would save us more. I'm a little concerned about where we would put it. It may have to sit outside for a while, but maybe that's, the ComEd has their buckets out all year long, so maybe that's fine.
Trustee Burley?
Yes.
Where are you guys getting this money from, the seventy-five thousand dollars?
Right now, we've got approximately a two hundred thousand dollars of net income in the general fund proposed budget, so it would lower that down. So instead of being a two hundred thousand dollar net income, you'd be down to, you know, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Aren't we short two hundred thousand dollars for a capital improvement fund, though, to pay off our debt?
Yes, we're budgeting that we're gonna eat into the reserves in the capital improvement fund, so.
And our reserves are what, twenty-three percent?
In the general fund, they're over twenty-five percent. But yes, there had been some, some talk from trustees about using that surplus for the capital improvement fund.
The impression...
I guess that's the next discussion then, is, all right, if we, if we're going to fund this seventy-five thousand from the two hundred thousand, is that agreeable?
Yeah, I think we need, I, I'll go for that.
Let me go right on down the line here.
No.
Trustee Kazemir?
No.
No?
Yeah, that's, I assume that that's where the money was coming from, the general fund.
It'd be the raisin or lower in the reserve, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's fine.
This would be the third year I've seen us discuss the need for this piece of equipment. Like, it's probably, the impression I had was that this was a unit that won't always be available. It's available now, was the impression I had, and if we want it, we should buy it. So having discussed this or seen it discussed routinely now, I think it's probably time to do it.
All right. Let's see, what do we need? We need a consensus?
I mean, I think I've got one from you going around. There seemed to be a consensus, so...
Everybody understand what was said there?
What's your decision?
Uh, I think we need it. I see Ken Schmidt all the time. I have nothing against Ken Schmidt, but I see his truck all the time doing tree trimming, Christmas decorations, everything else. So every time we see that truck out there, we're paying, we're paying for that truck. And I think that's something that, we're no longer a small community. We can't get by with a ladder and a hand saw. We have to have some of this equipment, and quite frankly, I, I think this is something that's justified.
Because we still own some streetlights. You know, we own a bunch of them out there in Parkview, which the ComEd does not put the new bulbs in. Ken Schmidt does that.
Right. Was there any discussion as to what the useful life of this truck would be? I don't recall.
I don't recall. I'd have to check with Ruck.
You mentioned it. It was ten or fifteen years, I think.
I thought it was gonna be extended, period.
Yeah, because he was saying it'd be about five grand a year if you averaged it out, I think.
If it's maintained every month or every two months, you, you won't have any problems with it.
All right. This thing isn't gonna have two hundred thousand miles.
No.
Just running around.
Right.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay. I lost track of where we're at.
Items for separate action, item A.
All right. That was vehicle funding options, the discussion. All right, next, items for separate action, ordinance fifteen fifty-nine approving FY fourteen annual operating budget and capital improvements program, first reading. Is there any discussion? You care to offer any additional comments?
No, no, than what I've said before, I will make the changes to it before Monday's meeting based on what we just had in the vehicle discussion. But otherwise, you'll see, see what you've already seen. We'll have second reading. I'll make that adjustment.
Have we discussed anything about paying ourselves back the three-quarters of a million dollars that we're short, or no? Are we gonna discuss that at all, or no?
I mean, that has come up. That was another thing that some trustees said surplus in the general fund could be used for, is to, to pay that back, so, I mean, the now a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars could certainly be used to. Some of that could be used to start to pay that back.
But I agree with that. That's something that we've talked about maybe three or four times the last few years. How do you see us finishing this FY thirteen?
I think we'll end up positive. Fiscal year thirteen, everything seems to be, revenues have held where we thought they would be, and we've kept expenses down, so I think we'll have a surplus at the end of fiscal year thirteen.
And usually you like to wait until after our audit before we would figure out what to do with anything that was left over. And do you know what the timeframe is for that?
Uh, they're coming in beginning of June to do the audit. And we'll, I mean, we'll have it finalized beginning of July.
Then this should probably be established as a priority for drafting the next budget, looking at what to do about this.
We can, during the year, we can...
And then address some of the concerns trustee Kazemir is bringing up. Okay. Any additional discussion on this? Okay, item B is ordinance fifteen sixty, approving the FY fourteen salary change, first reading. Administrators over.
Again, this is first reading. This is something we do every year along with the budget. Uh, it moves the minimum and maximums for the non-union positions. Uh, you will note there are some positions in there that we don't currently have. They're positions that we've had in the past, and we don't know if the board may elect in the future sometime to bring them back, so we leave them in there. There are some that have been proposed in the past that we never had, but they're in there. So when you see, not all those positions are currently staffed. I just want you to be aware of that. We are moving the ranges then, as we did with the Public Works Union. Uh, we are not having automatic adjustments, uh, May one, what we've referred to as a COLA. We will not be having that for, for non-union, so we'll all be merit-based this year. We're giving the department heads a little more flexibility with the evaluations. Uh, right now, you either get the three percent or you get zero. Uh, we've got a three percent pool in there, and we're gonna allow department heads to differentiate between their employees based on performance. Otherwise, I would answer any questions you have on the salary schedule.
Are there any questions from the board?
I just wanted to reiterate something. In the past, shifting these meant an automatic pay increase for employees.
Correct.
And that's been one of our priorities this year, was that we would shift these, and then it's not a given raise. So it'd be based on merit, so I just wanted to reiterate that.
So this would increase the ba, the minimum base salary four percent, no matter where you're at, or the range, four percent?
The range will move, but the employee doesn't move.
I still don't agree with the range. It should just freeze the range, but, because every year, you're increasing the range. And when are you gonna stop increasing it? I mean, the average employee in the private sector doesn't get a four percent range increase, so. I just don't, I think we should freeze it, personally.
We're trying to follow something similar to what we did with Public Works, because it's the same, so that was our thought behind it.
Any other questions?
Just kind of dumb question, Jeff. Could you go down the list here and tell us, like you said, which is which here?
I got them all marked. These ain't...
Okay, because I, when you get administrative assistant in some of these, I'm not sure who's who.
Those are the ones we don't have, no.
Admin, well, administrative assistant, that's like Kathy Madrick and Peggy.
Oh, okay.
That's administrative assistant. Executive assistant is Debbie. We currently don't have a building clerk. We don't have community service officer.
You don't have a deputy clerk?
Records clerk. Uh, we obviously have customer service specialist. That's what Linda was hired as. We were trying to come up with a generic name instead of water billing clerk, so we're trying to look at having people that help throughout. Uh, we don't have a deputy clerk. Fiscal assistant is Kathy Gleason. That's the accounts payable. Laura's the code enforcement officer. Management analyst is Rachel's position, and one of the new positions in police will be a management analyst position.
What is the executive assistant?
That's Debbie.
Debbie, okay.
Yeah, that's her title. Um, civil engineer, we do not have. Dispatch center supervisor, that's Ada. Assistant village administrator, that's...
No, you don't have village manager.
We don't have assistant to the village manager.
You don't have a planner.
We won't have a planner, because Jared's getting promoted senior.
You don't have a building inspector.
Uh, street supervisor is Gary. Building inspection supervisor is Mike Klupar. Senior planner will be Jared. Uh, utility supervisor is Jack Rosenstiel. And then we don't have assistant village manager, assistant director of public works, director of building, or director of community development. Those are positions we've had in the past.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this was a first reading. Okay, is there any new or unfinished business to come before the board?
I have one item.
Go ahead.
And it's to discuss with Chief Myers. A few days ago, I had occasion to be at the Griffin Traffic Light, Griffin and Thirty, and a sheriff's, a Kendall County sheriff's car with full lights inside, and needed to get through that intersection. And I noticed that they, their car did not trigger the light control. And I wondered if that was because of their car setup, or maybe if our light control needed maintenance.
I'm sorry. I would have to, um, I'd have to look into that, because I'm not sure, our cars, we don't have that, that system.
Okay.
Fire department does, both ambulances and fire trucks, the rescue squad does. I'm not sure if the Kendall County Sheriff's Office has that, uh, system in their car, but I will check and get back to you.
I learned something. If that's an expense that we could afford to entertain, and I felt like it put that officer at some risk trying to weave his way through that intersection, and I expected the light to change, and it didn't. He had...
Yeah, absolutely, the, um, we have discussed it during some of the construction phase for Orchard and for Thirty, um, from Thirty-four to Barcliff, uh, I would speak to Pete Wallers to see where we're at with that three-M program.
Is there any, any other business to come before the board? New or unfinished? Okay, there's no executive session tonight. Future meetings, village board meeting, Monday, March twenty-fifth, seven PM here at the village hall. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, so move.
For a second?
Second.
Take the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Burley.
Yes.
Trustee Kip.
Yes.
Trustee Kazmir.
Yay.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.